...meeting, there were specific concerns mentioned. I will list them briefly. Number one, page thirteen of the ordinance regarding the definition of household pets, why does the planning and zoning commission feel they need to regulate what kinds of pets are allowed in my household? Number two, page four regarding the definition of agricultural industries or businesses. We want to add vegetable and fruit production, compost production, vermiculture, using earthworms to convert organic waste into compost, and cooniculture, the practice of raising domestic rabbits for meat, fur, or wool, or for new rabbit breeds. Number three, on page sixty-five, section six of chapter seven, private roads, there are concerns. Number four, page sixty-seven, section thirteen of chapter seven, fencing standards, there are concerns. These were sent in email to all of you after the July meeting. As of yet, we have not heard back. As I do not see them re-referenced in the packet for this meeting, I am asking when they will be addressed. It is useless for us to suggest changes if we don't receive feedback on our suggestions. Feedback allows for us to either see our suggestions implemented or provide some closure, even if rejected. Silence, no feedback, leaves us hanging and leads to feelings of being neglected and sours into animosity. Please treat us with decency and open communication. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Madeline Bills. Wesley.
The trouble causer is back. Wesley Hunt, Landin', Utah. First of all, I want you each to know that I absolutely abhor where I'm at, standing at this microphone, talking to you, because this is the most intimidating thing that I deal with, and I'm so proud of each of you that you can deal with this, because I find it very challenging. I thought the meeting last week showed how important each of you are. Do you realize the magnitude of what you're doing? Do you realize the long-term effects of the choices and decisions you're making? They're not just going to affect you. They're going to affect thousands upon thousands. I just hope that we will remember that we each appreciate one another, that we are each valuable. I appreciate what you do. I pray for you every night and morning, because you are affecting my life and the life of my family. Thank you so much.
Let me jump in here real fast.
Marjorie.
Thanks. Marjorie Haunt, Torland, Elvis Al, I'm the lady with the voice disorder. Separation of powers is a political doctrine that divides the function of government into distinct branches to prevent the concentration of unchecked power and to provide checks and balances among them. The term trius politica, or separation of powers, was coined by Charles de Montesquieu, an eighteenth-century French social and political philosopher. His publication, The Spirit of the Laws, is considered one of the great works in the history of political theory and jurisprudence, and directly inspired the development of the United States Constitution and indirectly the Utah Constitution. Under Montesquieu's model, the political authority of any government is divided into three branches: the legislative, responsible for making laws, and the judicial, the executive responsible for enforcing laws, and the judicial, responsible for interpreting laws. It is likely that Montesquieu's separation of powers was inspired by earlier thinkers like John Locke and the structure of the Roman Republic and the British constitutional system. The framers of the U.S. Constitution implemented this model to prevent tyranny, ensuring that no single branch could dominate the others, with each branch having specific independent powers and responsibilities. Separation of powers, therefore, refers to the division of government responsibilities into distinct branches, limiting any one branch from exercising the core functions of another. Historically, the natural diffusion of principle allows for the watering down of any specific concept or principle and requires a periodic restitution of forms and systems. The intent of the separation of powers doctrine is to prevent the concentration of power or the various branches of power to one individual or small group of people and provide for checks and balances. Thank you.
Dave.
Ooh, I got shocked. Dave Goodman, unincorporated, Monticello. The separation of powers is one of the most fundamental principles of our democratic republic. Its origin goes back before the U.S. Constitution of seventeen eighty-nine and Montesquieu's work, The Spirit of the Laws, from seventeen forty-eight. Its origin harkens back further to the Greek historian Polybius one fifty B.C. and even further back to its fountainhead of Aristotle's work in The Politics, three thirty-five B.C. The enduring purpose of this doctrine is to secure liberty by preventing the accumulation of power into the hands of one or few and ensuring accountability. An analysis of the planning and zoning bylaws and how this commission functions today exposes room for improvement and suggests the need for increased protection from tyranny. Remember, we are looking for clear delineation and separation of the three powers of legislative, executive, and judiciary. The bylaws are very clear. The P&amp;Z Commission is the legislative body for all land use uses. There is provision and access to existing county judicial authority, and the P&amp;Z Administrative Office is clearly the executive branch entrusted with enforcement of the LUDMO, so clearly we can see all three branches. The problem lies in the fact that the P&amp;Z Administrative Office, or executive branch in this case, is heavily involved in the legislative process, which is a direct violation of the separation of powers doctrine. In fact, the executive role of the P&amp;Z Administrator is so far removed from the commission's legislative process that this official title of Administrator does not even appear in the bylaws at all. There is no role for the Planning and Zoning Administrator in the planning and zoning legislative process other than as a staffer. The entire process of legislating is to be done by the commission, our local body of legislators for land use led by the chair, not as it is done now with the Administrator leading out on legislation, which is a massive violation of separation of powers, because the Administrator already controls the executive branch. To maintain the separation of powers and avoid any conflict of interest, the P&amp;Z Administrator must not run the meeting in any form and only support the process as a member of staff. We request that the Planning and Zoning Administrator relinquish leadership of the P&amp;Z legislative process and attend these meetings as a member of staff only. Thank you.
Greg. Greg.
God, wait. Hi, Greg Colbreth. I live up in Elk Meadows, and I think that some of what you're hearing this evening is probably pretty important to pay attention to, because there are ways that things can be changed and ways that things can't be changed. And without making sure you're going down the right path, it's pretty hard to make changes after the fact, and I think that there are changes that need to be made. Things that people are talking about in the recent changes in the planning and zoning for the county that are important. People are paying attention to that probably more than you think, and I don't know. I know that a survey was done of what people think about, you know, what's in there and what isn't. I would like to know how many of those people were rural residents compared to, say, municipal town or city residences. Residents, there you go, and so on, because I don't know how many people on this board are actual rural residents and live outside of town and have the same values that I have living outside of town. I mean, I moved here, what, six years ago, built a house, spent way too much money on it, and that's normal. I knew that going in, but I'd like for things to be similar to what I was envisioning when I got here. Now, out in Elk Meadows, there's a lot of vacant lots. I realize that there will be homes on those lots one day, sooner or later. That's fine. I know how big the lots are and how about where the houses could or couldn't be, and that's fine. But if we're going to change horses in the middle of the stream, it better be a damn good horse. That's all I can tell you. You need to shop for your horse thoroughly. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Greg, I normally wouldn't answer this, but every one of us but one are unincorporated in San Juan County. Carol.
Carol Martin, Elk Meadows. I'd like to address an issue of systems, not a critic of commission itself, but rather of a process that seems detrimental to public relations. What is the purpose of public comment section on the agenda? It appears to me, after long observation, that the public comment section is provided for the public to vent their frustrations or offer solutions to problems. If this is true, then I would suggest that it is missing a major component, that of acknowledgement. In any relationship, autonomic listening is not enough to develop and maintain good relations. Some kind of feedback or consoling or empathy or acknowledgement is required. I would suggest the chairman or any member of the commission offer some sort of feedback to each public comment, so that this interaction is not so one-sided as it is now. How is public comment considered? What does the commission do with our public comments? What is the follow-up mechanism for public comment? I'm sure this is not the intent, however, the current method of public comment feels almost degrading. A member of the public stands in the podium before a body of a raised I.S., which for many people requires significant courage. They are then required to identify themselves in a time for only three minutes to state their case, and then they are abruptly stopped in mid-sentence, returning to their seat without any feedback and never hearing how their comment was received or what was done about it. Often, the commissioners are not observably paying any attention to the speaker, and even the commissioners who are paying attention give no indication of how the comments are received. This is very off-putting. I care about what happens in my community, and I want to be involved without an us-versus-them feeling. I think there is far too much distance between government officials and the public. Please help correct this by being more considerate and interactive with public comment. Thank you.
Lynn.
Lynn Martin, Monticello. For the past eight months before the hiring of the building official and the permit tech, and during the workshops and in the in-office meetings, we, the people of San Juan County, repeatedly raised the question regarding LUDMO or ordinance enforcement, who were told countless times not to worry. It was not the intent of the P&amp;Z department to seek out violations, yet here we are now with a fully-staffed department and over five pages, pages twenty-eight to thirty-three, of enforcement language in the proposed 2025 ordinance. In the introduction to section eleven of 2025 proposed LUDMO, it says, "An enforcement officer may investigate alleged violations of this LUDMO and may initiate enforcement actions if violations are found to exist. An enforcement officer is authorized to make examinations and investigations of all real property in the county, as allowed by law." My interpretation, this means the enforcement officer can come onto your private property with any baseless claim by any neighbor or anyone who has it out for you and inspect until he finds violation. In other words, private property is dead. Back to the ordinance, by accepting a land use permit or license from the county, the permitee or licensee agrees to cooperate in compliance examinations and investigations. Upon discovering a violation, the county attorney's office shall, at its discretion, file enforcement actions in court as necessary. My interpretation, this means that to get a permit, you have to virtually sign away your privacy rights on your own property. There is no stated oversight on these forced inspections. It also means that your private property can be invaded, and you may be cited with a violation based on the interpretation of this ordinance by anyone who can secure the enforcement officer job. Continuing on, look at what has been a two-year nightmare for San Juan County business owner Connor Simmons of Spanish Valley. He has operated a glamping facility since 2021 while paying transit room taxes the entire time to the county, seeking rezoning to be compliant, and after ten separate attempts to resolve the compliance issue, instead of allowing for rezoning, the county sued him. That is a counterproductive solution and a less-than-creative way to encourage business in San Juan County, if that's our objective. It is easy to predict that land ordinance enforcement in San Juan County will become aggressive and interfere with the lives of our citizens in ways we cannot yet see.
I think this is Mark Shapiro. Is it Mark?
Cameron, I grew up in Kansas City, and I love your shirt.
Oh.
My name is Mark Shapiro, and I've lived at Pack Creek Ranch for over eight years. I attended the first public meeting on the Loves Project on May ninth, 2019. I sat in the audience and listened to Kim Van Dyke describe a Loves corporate policy that truck stops should not be located within 500 feet of a residential area. That raises two issues. First, Mr. Van Dyke did not do his homework, since there are obviously residences within that 500-foot project site, and second, why is a 500-foot buffer zone needed for a truck stop? If it's to prevent negative effects on residents, what are those? If it's to keep residents from being bothered by other effects, what are those effects? And of course, do gas stations need a 500-foot buffer zone? The fact is that you've previously heard considerable testimony from residents about what the negative and bothersome effects of a truck stop are. The Utah Property Rights Ombudsman has issued a very clear opinion that a truck stop is not a gas station or a restaurant, even if it has some characteristics of each. Here's the conclusion verbatim, quote, "A local government may designate uses as conditional but must also adopt compliance standards for the uses. The Wellsville City Code does not provide for a truck stop as a conditional use in the CH zone. It must be presumed that the city council left the term out advisedly, and if it wants to include a truck stop, it may amend the ordinance. A truck stop is a distinct land use with significantly different impacts than those associated with the component parts. It is therefore inappropriate to conclude that a truck stop may be implied because other allowed uses are somewhat similar. Even if the proposed facility consists of a combination of otherwise allowed uses, because a truck stop is substantially different, it cannot be allowed without an ordinance amendment," unquote. During the entire course of this Loves application, I don't believe there has been any point where the ombudsman's opinion has been challenged with facts. What has actually happened in the hearings that I've attended or listened to is that the ombudsman opinion has just been ignored. This has caused the use of very foolish logic to justify Loves truck stop in its current location. It goes something like this: A dog has legs. A person has legs. A dog has a stomach. A person has a stomach. Therefore, a dog is a person. Silly, right? But isn't this exactly where we are today? Here in August 2025, we're looking at two stark realities. First, this is a dog of a project, and second, a truck stop is not a gas station.
Shannon.
Shannon Brooks, unincorporated, Monticello. I'd love to start with pleasantries, but three minutes won't allow, so I'm going to jump right in. Last month, I talked to some commissioners about establishing a process that involves the public to help alleviate some of the animosity that is growing in the public. I haven't heard back yet in regards to that, so here's my proposal. Step one, which we've been doing, the public submits changes, ideas. Step two, those changes or ideas are discussed or determinations are made on them by the P&amp;Z in a timely fashion that allows my committee, the Public Awareness Committee of Citizens, to then take those ideas back to the majority of the public who are not watching these meetings. They should be, but they're not. So we'd like to take that back to them. Then we need some time to give it to them, get feedback from them, and then bring that feedback to you. I'll need more than three minutes to do that. Just letting you know. Number four, at that point, the commission makes determinations. It acknowledges the feedback and then makes determinations, and then we're done. But at least the public got heard, and they got acknowledged that they put in input. It was considered, approved, not approved, whatever. Okay, we can live with that, but to be ignored, that's a problem. Some cases will warrant a second look at it by the public. I personally submitted four potential changes at the last meeting. I emailed them all to you guys the next day. That would be step one. Step two would be a response from the commission via email or public meeting. That hasn't happened yet. Step three would be our committee holding meetings with the public to take your ideas or your comments to our suggestions. And then step four would be us taking the feedback from the public, bringing it back to you at this meeting to let you know what the public is thinking, okay? I just want to point out that tonight's public comment participants, there's nineteen of us here, and I don't know how many are online, invalidates the claims by the county attorney's office and the planning and zoning office that those who are showing concern about this ordinance are more than just a few extremists. We've got 500 people signing petition, 250 people have signed a survey, and there's nineteen, over nineteen people in this meeting. It's not a few extremists. I would like a retraction from both offices about that mischaracterization, and thank you very much.
Marlene.
Good evening. Marlene Huckabee, Spanish Valley. You all know me. I sent you all an invitation. How many came to see my property?
I called, and you didn't have coffee ready.
Boo. I would have made it, but I didn't. You didn't call. Nobody called. Two people have been on my property, but not for the reason to look at the possibilities of a Loves, and that really makes me angry. If you were to sell a piece of property, would you just look online, look at a printed page, or would you walk that perimeter and say, "I don't know if I want to buy that or I want to sell that"? Why can't you do that kind of respect for the county that you represent? You don't care enough about 13 acres that's going to do some big enemy problems forever, not just a short term, forever. I won't be here forever, but my family will be on my property. It's forever. I cannot believe you can make a decision and vote when you have not stood there and looked. As we drove in from the highway, yeah, you look at it and you think, woo, yeah, my truck stop could go there. No. You stand on my property and look out. No. It's not a pretty sight. It's real ugly. So you didn't come to my invitation. Can I ask you a question that you will answer?
We can't debate.
You can't answer? Okay, then I will ask you another question.
And I've been to your property.
Okay, I didn't know that, but you weren't there to ask me questions so that we could discuss it. So would you like to have a truck stop next to your house? Any of you? Lloyd's kind of in a vulnerable spot. He's kind of got, you are too. You've got trucks. I don't know if you live where your business is, but that's your business. I don't have a truck repair shop in my yard, so I don't want that, and I'm going to fight tooth and nail until I can't, okay? I know I've sent two letters, and by the way, I said I would kneel in front of you. I have a titanium knee. I'm not good at kneeling. So please don't vote in. Please vote no, but then I have more information. They're putting in a truck stop that will open in September in Crescent Junction. So right now, counting the gas stations from my house to Crescent Junction, there's nine. There's a truck stop. I'm going to keep going. There's a truck stop.
You're done. You're done.
Cortez.
That's your time. Thank you.
This is what my little notes are on.
Marlene, you're done. Thank you.
I know. Please, please.
Thanks, Marlene. Thank you. Holly.
I love it that we're on a first-name basis. So I'm here, Holly Sloan from Northern San Juan County. So over the course of six years, I'll try to summarize this, community members, as Mark mentioned, and Marlene, have sort of repeatedly made the case that the truck stop at the location of Sunny Acres would have harmful effects on the approved residential and small-business community that is developing in that area. We're still kind of waiting. We've presented credible evidence, but we're waiting to hear what the evidence is against that, because we know the majority of you are inclined to approve the Love Stop, but what we haven't heard is, other than a decision that a gas station and a truck stop, or there's a combination of uses that make the truck stop appropriate for there, we haven't heard any real discussion on sort of the harmony, the safety, the health issues. So I guess we've, I feel like we've made the case that there are real safety, health concerns associated with the truck stop. We kind of need to hear why they're not real. You know, we sort of need to hear back from you guys about why are these concerns that have been presented by very credible experts, why aren't they believed? Why is a truck stop in harmony with Marlene's house, with everybody's home that's right in that area, with the small businesses? I've heard quiet apologies from commission members, comments that our hands are tied, the ordinance requires this, but again, we kind of want a deeper discussion of this. You all know that I'm a part of the coalition that has repeatedly appealed this decision. It was not our first choice. We had hoped originally that the county commission would hear our repeal. This was six years ago. They didn't hear our repeal. Also, on several occasions, we've asked the county if they would sit down and talk seriously about mitigation. The county refers us to Loves. Loves has no incentive to talk to us. They know they have the majority of the commission on their side, so why are they going to talk to us further about any kind of real mitigation? So we're kind of only left with this idea that we have to go to court to try to stop this, or to try to slow it down, or to try to force meaningful conversation. I hope that somewhere along the lines, we can stop this and we can have real mitigation conversation.
Thank you, Holly. Colby, you knew you were right after Holly.
Well, you know, that's how our marriage works. And she said most of what I had to say, so. Colby Smith from Northern San Juan County. Colby Smith from Northern San Juan County. I just, I just hope at some point in the discussion, you will clarify something. And that is, which proposal are you considering tonight? Because there are two of them in the packet. There's one, the original one, the 53 bay truck stop proposal that is attached to the contract between Loves and Sitla, and that was the original application back on May 3rd of 2019. And there's a new one that was submitted between last meeting and this one. It's dated May 29th of 2020. It's got 75 trucks, truck bays. It's an over 40% increase in the number of truck bays. That feels like a material change to me. And the date of it, May 2020, is a time when the new ordinance was in effect, the one that doesn't allow a truck stop in that location, for good reasons, by the way, I think. Anyway, I just think it would be helpful if you all would clarify, what one are you talking about? Because we don't want to have another fight when you issue a building permit someday, and it's some proposal that looks totally unlike what was originally submitted back in May of 2019, and that you all have concluded was complete at the time. If it was complete, why is there a new proposal in front of us? So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Colby.
Ned.
Hello. My name is Ned Plasse, and I reside at 140 Terra Drive in North San Juan County. As I presented during public comment in the July meeting, we are against the truck stop as it is currently proposed. And that proposed in the documentation that you've made available to the public. Our property is directly east of the proposed location, and there are numerous residents east of the location, regardless of what the Loves representative said at the last meeting. Happy to show any of you the residences that are due east of, of the proposed site. We do not believe that a truck stop with 69 tractor trailers with overnight stays, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, can be in harmony with residences. The impacts to the community from a truck stop include significant increases in light, noise, traffic, air quality, garbage containment, chemical containment, and local resources like law enforcement. The impacts will far exceed impacts from any of the existing businesses or residences in that area. And I would go as far as saying it's quite likely that the impacts will exceed all of the current impacts from all of the businesses that currently exist there, as well as the residences. And that includes the recently approved U-Haul. Given these issues, it's unclear how this proposed effort is in harmony with the existing community, the community that I reside in. If the commission chooses to continue with the proposed truck stop, we would like that the concerns of the citizens directly impacted be considered. We would like any approval to be conditional to reduce the impacts to the community by ensuring that some mitigations are taken to address the concerns of the community, many of which you've heard here tonight. We have provided a list of potential mitigations to some of our concerns in previous emails to the commission, three of them actually. We have received no feedback from the commission, so we can only assume that you've either not read them or you're not considering them. And we have no way to, to know that, much like any of the other statements that were made tonight. We would also like to request that the Loves representative provide to the community the studies and analyses he referenced in the July 2025 meeting. He indicated that many of our concerns brought up by the community have been studied, and the results show that there should be no concern. We look forward to seeing such studies and analyses for the proposed location, as we've never heard of those things until the last meeting when he disclosed those. One final note, even Loves differentiates between a car stop and a truck stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ned. And Susan.
First, the talking points, in case you guys like to read instead of listen. Susan Carter, you've met me before. I'm 1,000 feet also in that community from the proposed truck stop. Going to try and address three points rather quickly. The first one, I think other people have covered adequately, so I'm going to just quickly say, I just gave you some, some quick bullets there. You have a lot of data, and nobody has ever discussed it amongst all of you in public discussion. So tonight, I know you're going to be making a vote, and I hope you will address these points. You will give us feedback. We can hear your thoughts. Next point, I believe, and I could be wrong, but I see that the, the proposal is not just a gas station, a restaurant, and a convenience store, which are the, your definition of a truck stop. It also is including overnight accommodations. You have showers, toilets, places for people to sleep. Unlimited to just truck drivers, Loves allows the traveling public as well to park and stay. So this is also a campground. That is not a use in your 2011 ordinance, as I can read it. Not an attorney. I would say, however, since you decided it was a legitimate application under the 2011, I would like you to use the definitions of the 2011. Don't stretch them. Don't pound them into something they're not. A truck stop, as many of us know, with all of that, is not a gas station. Gas stations don't let people sleep in them. They don't provide toilets and showers on a private basis for people as they're paying gas. Third and last point, I would say mitigation is your only course. If you are going to go with an approval, I believe you have to do it. Again, not an attorney, conditionally. And that would call for some type of a process to develop guidelines as other communities, as other planning commissions have done elsewhere around this country. You have lots of resources you can reference. This would give us a process. This would give us an opportunity as a community to work with you. And I think you've heard a lot tonight that nobody feels heard. Nobody feels that we have been worked with. We would love to hear you tonight, speak aloud, and give us, what's in your brains? Why aren't emissions and impacts on children important? Why isn't safety of our community important to you? Why are those not harmonious issues that should be addressed? So we would like to see a process, and we hope we hear from you. Thank you.
Okay, you want to? We're going to move to online. There's.
We've got.
Daniel.
We've got one, two, three, four hands raised right now.
Okay.
We're going to start with this one.
Okay.
That one. Bradley? Bradley, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Great, thanks for calling on me. My name's Bradley Angel, and I'm calling in from Sunny Acres Lane, and right on the county line. And it was back in 1992, 33 years ago, that my wife and I purchased this beautiful property in this beautiful neighborhood with wonderful neighbors. And never in our wildest dreams or nightmares did we think that, we knew things would be developed, as it has, but never would we even, by any stretch of the imagination, imagine that a massive freeway-style truck stop, such as that proposed by Loves, in a residential area so close to homes, would ever even be considered. As everybody has, you know, a lot of the commentators have said, a proposed truck stop would be a health threat to residents, a traffic hazard, destroy the quality of life we enjoy. There'd be massive air pollution, noise, traffic, bright lights, and destruction of the harmony and character of our neighborhood and community. And I, a year and a half ago, I submitted to you all in writing and testified about it. I sent a reference to the state of Utah Department of Environmental Qualities website, where they have a document entitled "Health Effects: Be Idle Free." What you see and can't see can hurt you. And for those who don't know, idling is when trucks just run their engines. That would happen a lot, or the truck stop happens all the time. And this document says in part, "While children, the elderly, and people with respiratory ailments are most vulnerable to the pollutants from vehicle exhaust, these emissions affect everybody. Pollutants released during idling have been linked to the increased incidence of asthma, allergies, lung and heart disease, and cancer." And not only, the last thing I would just want to share is that not only do I have moderate to severe asthma, had it for about 30 years now, but back in early April, I had surgery for cancer. So the thought of living near a massive freeway-style truck stop in my neighborhood, in our neighborhood, that emits 24/7 cancer-causing chemicals is unacceptable. And it would break my heart, and I would have to seriously consider selling this place that I love. I'm a taxpayer. You represent us, and you don't represent Loves. So I respectfully plead with you to follow common sense and your heart and the wishes of your constituents, and say no to Loves. There's plenty of other locations that people don't live next to. And so again, please respectfully turn this project down. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradley.
Thanks, Brad.
Next, Joe. Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, how you doing? Joe Musumetschi from Elk Meadows. I, I just fell in love with San Juan County because of the rural character of the place. Having lived in the city my whole life, I, I like the liberty of rural living. And San Juan County definitely brings that to me. Being a property owner, I live here part-time, soon to be full-time. I've read the general plan and watched the ordinance process over the last six months. I have my doubts of whether the county is being directed in the paths to sustain this rural character. It has drawn me and my friends over the past 10 years to, to move here and buy property and to prosper here. Well, it makes, what makes sense in general plan should be updated when, allow the public to offer input, updating process. It only makes sense that people who live here should have a say in deferring and securing the thing we love most, the rural character of San Juan County, not city living. I have concerns, as many other residents that I talked to, especially in Elk Meadows region, had proposed to 2025 ordinance and redirected San Juan County for safeguarding away from the rural character and moving in towards a less rural future. That's what we came here for. My, my next item of concern is the lack of ordinance for the agriculture protection areas, APAs. Under Utah Code, Title 17, Chapter 14, details the process, the need for APAs. Pages 33 to 34 of the general plan call out the fact that since 2018, there has been no provision for APAs, which has yet to be rectified. The Public Awareness Committee of the Citizens had a meeting in June with the UDAF, Water, Land, and Conservation Manager, and he's, and he stated that he's trying to encourage San Juan County to adopt this ordinance for some time. Is this on your list, the needed ordinances? Or will this be done soon? That's just my public comment. I, I hopefully, we will keep the rural character of San Juan County. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Next, Daniel, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thank you to the commissioners. I know you guys have a really rough job. As we put a hold on the rezoning to finish the general plan, I asked that we laser-focus the LUDMO, or maybe redo the LUDMO, to laser-focus on affordability and facilitating new business. We can take this opportunity to refine, streamline, and downsize the proposal. Many times, the commission has mentioned that passing it is not final, and if something was not working, it could be taken out later. I prefer the opposite, which is if you start small, then we can add things in as we go and as they're needed. One such thing is, I think San Juan should reconsider its proposed zoning ordinance to allow single-wide manufactured homes, and also manufactured homes as ADUs. These changes would enhance affordability, increase housing supply, support multi-generational living, preserve the lifestyle and character of San Juan in line with the statuants towards flexible housing solutions. By implementing reasonable regulations, such as, you know, setbacks and things that we basically already have, the county can balance our affordability with community integrity. That's all I have, and I just want to thank you again for you guys' work, and that's it.
Thanks, Daniel. Thanks, Daniel. Christopher, can you unmute yourself?
Hello, everyone. My name is Christopher McBane. I'm also a landowner and member of the Elk Meadows community. To follow up with Joe Musumetschi had stated just a moment ago, my feelings are the same as his. And in addition to that, I just have a brief comment. The federal government is obliged to ensure all US states as a republican form of government. Philosophically, however, we should operate under the principles of democracy, town halls, workshops, hearings, public comment, et cetera. In theory, this sounds like public equality, but in most cases, these forms are, are either insincere or do not allow the people to really communicate, coming, coming across more as a PSA than a true roundtable experience. The concept of public equality is central to democracy, as it provides a fair mechanism to resolve conflicts of interest without resorting to dictatorship. While this commission has the final vote, the principles of democracy can be applied by allowing more time within reason for public comment. If these open meetings were truly open, they would be structured in such a manner as to allow more flexibility when receiving input. In fact, there would be nearly unlimited opportunities to be heard and have our ideas aired without losing decorum. Just because Utah Code allows commissions to be tyrannical doesn't mean we have to enact all the laws, all the law allows. True empathy and interest would go a long way. There are reasons few attend regularly scheduled county commission and planning and zoning meetings. One of those reasons is because of the insincerity of the public comment period, the lack of initial interest, no secondary questions, no clarification, and most of all, no meaningful follow-up. For the practice of real democracy in San Juan County, the public comment period should be expanded. There should be some kind of interaction or acknowledgement from the commission to the, to the individuals who are courageous enough to share their thoughts, and some mechanism, a follow-up with a short report back to the public, communicating that research or some other action was taken and what the result is. Please consider following the example of Grand County and the courtesy they afford their citizens in open meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Carrie.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to support several of the other commenters, and that, first of all, there is legal precedent in Utah that a truck stop is not a gas station and not a restaurant. I encourage you to respect that precedent. Next, the community has worked hard to provide well-documented, well-referenced information concerning a number of the issues with the Loves truck, truck stop. These include safety, air quality, trash mitigation, and water resources. In the recent meeting, Loves alluded to several studies that they had done that refute these concerns. And in the interest of transparency, it would be great to see those studies. And I would ask, and I know you don't answer, but it would, it would be nice to know if you have seen those studies and if and why those studies have not been made available to the public. If there is indeed a reason to be less concerned about these issues, the community should know it. And finally, I'd like to encourage you to find a way to mitigate the community concerns. You've heard many of them tonight, and they have been ongoing. And the, the community has been pretty clear and has even provided concrete solutions. We would like a way to work with you to address these. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you. Okay, that can. Wait, hold on. Let me make sure that none of these. Mac is up yet?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that concludes public comments. All righty, let's move into review, discussion of the bylaws. I, I think we, well, everybody get Melissa's.
No, only Kristen said to just send it to you and her.
Oh, okay.
I have to find my phone. My computer busted. Give me a sec. I'm sorry.
Back out, or we get back to?
Okay, everything that we talked about is in red, the changes. And then Melissa decided to put another seventy-three changes.
I did not. They are real quick. Okay? You want me to go through the grammar ones too? You're in the packet and I'm on my phone. And I'm happy to share this. Okay, tell me when you're ready.
Go.
Okay. Says one point, go to one point one, the very top. Oh, actually, actually, go to the whereas, keep going up.
Higher, okay.
Okay, that first whereas, it just mentions the San Juan County zoning ordinance of twenty-eleven. Can we just say something in like subsequent approved ordinances? So we don't have to come back and approve our bylaws if and when we ever do a new ordinance?
Just take the twenty-eleven off?
Yeah, I, it's by San Juan County ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Then go down to one point one. Okay, remove the comma after county. Go, keep going down, one point one. I think it should be county ordinance and resolutions. I think it's a
There's two ands there, so you got family?
No, you, no, after county. Look at the word county. It's county, I think it means county ordinance and resolutions is what that's supposed to say. This was re-typed, so I think these are just new typos.
Okay.
Okay, and it also should be Roman numeral one dot one.
Following the rest, yep.
Okay. Uh, number two, uh, Roman numeral two dot two. I think it should say names because it is possible two people run for an office. So if you go down, um, nomin- okay, in, second to the last sentence, in the case of nominations, the commission shall vote by voice vote from the name nominated for the office. I think it's from the names nominated. Okay?
Okay.
Then the next one is um, under Roman numeral two dot three, remove the word all because the chair doesn't preside at all meetings.
We found that out.
We found that out. Okay. Roman numeral three dot four, is it called, Mac, the Planning and Building Department?
It is.
Appropriate name?
Yes.
The title, okay.
Two operations within that.
Instead of removing the word all, would it make more sense to say the acting chairperson resides in all meetings? Just to make sure a chairperson.
Well, somebody might confuse acting as in like not the real chairperson, like your acting chair, right?
Makes sense.
Okay. Go down to Roman numeral three dot seven A.
Okay, while we're going by that, everybody good with Roman numeral three one?
I definitely have some markup, so I was just gonna wait, but
Okay.
Let's get through mine, so we can just, and then just do all yours, Anne. Okay, um. Okay, Roman numeral three dot seven A. After by motion needs a comment. Three seven, gotta keep going down, Mac.
Wigging out.
Yeah, there you go. Number A, the committee, comma, by motion, comma. You need another comma after by motion.
Forward.
Okay. Okay, there's an extra, three dot eight, there's an extra space in vice chair that everybody can see. Roman numeral four, one dot one.
Hold on, my mouse is on the blink again.
Oh, no, is it? No, it's Roman numeral four dot eleven. Okay. To that end, where's to that end? Okay, after the red stuff, the chairperson shall maintain order and decorum and to that end, comma, needs a comma.
Did you used to be an English teacher?
I used to be a newspaper reporter.
I know, you're totally skipping family.
Roman, Roman numeral four dot twelve, the correct
Four dot twelve, got it.
The correct way, the correct what spelling of insure, and this is E N S U R E instead of I N S U R E. Okay, now one that's pre tip, um, possibly contentious. Roman numeral five, number five.
Five, five.
Okay. I think this, I think under this maintain public impartiality, I think the red should end at agenda item period. Because of course, if we get information from somebody, it may persuade our vote. I'm done.
Okay, Anne.
Okay, well.
Back at the top.
Yeah, back to the top. Is, does the title stay the same after we amend this? Like an ordinance amending ordinance?
It is an ordinance that the commission adopts, the board of commissioners adopt. And we would have to do an amendment to the ordinance. This would be Amendment B.
Okay, because I was wondering, how do you keep track? Like, how do we know this is the current one? Does it need to be?
Couple of years ago, we were asked by members of the public to amend and incorporate changes. The commission, board of commissioners at the time did that, and so that is how come we have the A there? And so we would do another amendment to the twenty twenty dash oh three.
So it would change to B? Okay, so that's how we would know that which ordinance?
Correct.
Which one?
So it never becomes like a twenty five, twenty twenty-five?
No, because you're amending the ordinance that exists, and so ordinance like picture is law for the county, and so.
Okay, um, next one. Two, uh, Roman numeral two, three, section A. Um, the chairperson presides, and I know Melissa, we're having, removing the all, um, at meetings of the planning commission maintaining order and decorum and ensures that the procedures prescribed in the San Juan County Land Use Code, Utah State Code and policies stated herein are followed. Does that San Juan County Land Use Code cover us for all of our land use codes?
All of the land use code.
Supplemental Spanish Valley Code.
Correct.
We don't need to specify.
And by taking the twenty-eleven off of the top, and it just hierarchy overall, all of the land use ordinances.
Okay, because
So the hopes are we can just have one.
Right, when we get there, so I'm just saying, do we want that?
Yes.
Is that a catch-all term?
It will be the catch-all.
Umbrella the Spanish Valley supplemental ordinance.
Unless you have a supplemental to the new land use ordinance.
But that hasn't happened yet. I'm just saying, if we approve this today, does that wording cover Spanish Valley?
Well, with the changes, we would have to bring it back to you, so. It wouldn't be approved today.
Codes governing land use, codes plural governing land use would be another option.
Because between now and the time that this new ordinance is adopted, we have to make sure that we're covering our existing active land use.
We can put that in there. I just worry that by putting the word proposed, once we do finally get to the adoption, then we're gonna have to amend our bylaws again for that language.
I wasn't suggesting putting in proposed. Is that, were you suggesting that? No, we're not suggesting putting in the word proposed. But maybe making, you know, I'm just clarifying, does that cover everything?
Land use code?
You refer to codes governing land use.
Can we change it to that then?
That should catch all. That's just one option.
So you want to rearrange those words?
I would just and ensures that the procedures prescribed in the codes governing land use.
And an S.
In the San Juan County codes governing, governing land use, I guess. Is what it would be, Utah State Code and policies, so. It would just take out the San Juan County Land Use Code because that is the title of this ordinance. You know, for two thousand and eleven, it could be, I don't know. It, I mean, it's, it's fairly minor, but I
No, that's fine.
I would just wanna update. If we're trying to update, let's update it correctly. Um, Roman numeral three one, okay, so this is kind of a discussion. It does say one member from a special service district within the county. So my question here is why is there a special service district? Position required, what's the thinking behind that? What's the motivation for why you'd want someone? Because we do have many so special service districts in the county, including the cemetery, right? Solid waste.
Health district, San Juan Counseling.
Yeah.
We've got the water conservancy district, Mexican Hat.
Right.
Special Service Eastern, Eastlands.
I'm not arguing against having one. I just want it to be clear why we what purpose that person's um, participation in the planning commission brings. Like, what is the added benefit of a special service district member to the planning commission?
We have Lloyd, who represents the Spanish Valley Special Service District here. I mean, you've seen Lloyd questioned multiple times, well, do you have the water for this? Um, that's, that's a pretty critical one when you have these developments coming in, that they're able to see that from their perspective with the zoning changes that are coming in, requests for zone zoning changes, the applications that come in for land use, it's good just to have that perspective on this board. So that was, at the time we incorporated this in here, was specifically for that, so that they were represented in all of our land use decisions that you're considering, the water or these smaller communities that that may be ran just by a special service districts themselves.
Right, so is there preference being given to someone from the solid, from the water service district over, say, cemetery or health?
No, anybody that's in on a special service district can apply. We don't, in here, it's just special service district, so any of them can apply. We've always had a challenge of getting volunteers or letters of interest from individuals in any of the other areas. And so I would imagine it would still be about the same with the special service district, that we would go out and if nobody submits a letter of interest, we would be contacting those special service districts to, to former representative.
Um, I just want to bring attention to it. It's nothing personal at all. It's just, it doesn't not in, in um, intrinsically create a conflict of interest when there is a water manager that is voting on development that directly um, impacts water supplies and that type of thing. So just bringing that up for either discussion or just a point of
I'll let you guys discuss that. I can give you my answer, but you let you guys kind of decide that one.
I have a question. Do you think there's an, another area in the county to get a member from another area might be a better use of that? See, because you need seven, you need to have a tiebreaker, right?
Right.
I have an odd number.
And so there is that option, right? Instead of, we could get rid of having a requirement of a special service district. That would be preferential if the person was serving on a special service district, but they don't necessarily need to. We don't require a member from that. Does that make sense? So you would have um, maybe, I think what
At large?
Yeah, maybe a second at large, something like that. What do, what do we think?
I've got no issue with it, with the special service district.
Because we have so many limited people, like that limits who might be able to join, or who might want to volunteer. They have to be from the service district. And they're already serving in that capacity voluntarily, so they may not want to also volunteer for the planning commission, is what I'm saying. So it's a, it's something that we could open up.
So if you want to volunteer for one thing, it opens it up for you.
What do you mean?
You can't volunteer for two.
What, for your service district and the planning commission?
Cody's on a service district as well.
Yeah, Cody's The conservation district is a big, it's a, from the state, and so.
I guess I'd reiterate my comments from before, and this is nothing personal with Melissa either, but I feel like we should remove Bluff and add Mexican Hat or Eastland or another area. And I guess my reasoning behind it is that Incorporated Bluff is the largest incorporated town in the, in the state of Utah. And it also doesn't have any adjoining private ground next to the incorporation. All of it is federal ground, and so there's, there's not that adjoining ground or property, the property rights that could be developed or debated that affects the area of Bluff because it's such a large incorporated area, and they've taken all that upon themselves. So I don't see why they're represented here on this county board. I'd rather see uh, an Eastland or a Mexican Hat or someplace like that that's not represented that, that deals with that development and votes issues.
Why is Bluff on here then? I mean
That was prior to.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so if we're gonna update it, let's make it reflect on what San Juan County looks like today, and if Bluff is really not you know, an appropriate representative region, then we should, will we have three at larges? Or, or I mean, change it to Mexican Hat or um, Eastland? But what if you don't get anybody?
Choose, and if you don't get anybody.
So um, can we make it more broad instead of naming those areas? What townships, what are they? They're not
They're just communities.
Communities. Member from non-bluff community areas.
Wait, if you're, if you're gonna do
I mean, I, just personally, I'd like to see South represented as close to, you know, and that's why maybe I would say Mexican Hat. But like you said, how do you exclude maybe an Eastland? But the southern part of the county would have a huge, a huge hole as far as representation, I would, I think.
Well, that, that, that is a good argument for an at-large position added. Because then we could try to work on finding somewhere.
How about an at-large South and an at-large North?
I was gonna say, because you'll start, you start getting to me at large, you're gonna have northern San Juan take over this entire port.
Yeah, I've been
And that's why it's been pieced out the way it has been done in, in this article, um, to help make it more broad across the county.
I, I would, I would be for something like that, an at-large north and an at-large south, and it could be, you know, and, and and I'm not sure where you want to divide that, but I guess that's another discussion. You know, is Eastland south or north?
Central.
Well, I think if
If you're on, if you're on the south side of four ninety-one, you're, you're southern San Juan County. If you're on the north side, you're northern. I mean, I, I don't know, that's just a discussion.
How about just, um, I think Spanish Valley, we need to keep, I mean, that's just, to me, it's easy, it's easy. I mean, like, why?
I don't disagree.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a name, but it's an area. Like, it's not, it's not Spanish Valley nor, or it's not north San Juan County, it is Spanish Valley. Everybody knows that's established as that.
I agree.
Um, but what, I was gonna say, what about for the south, what if we said Eastland or Mexican Hat? As, you know, one member from Eastland or Mexican Hat, that gives us some wider coverage there. And then add, um, what about a mid-region, like monosello blending, unincorporated monosello blending?
Well, just take Well, just take a step back, I think if if you're gonna go that route, it needs to clearly say. However, many members at large from an unincorporated area, it doesn't say that right now.
Okay, so.
So, so right now, it, you know.
And one member at large from, oh, I see.
And unincor- it had, it if that's the route you're taking, you need to specify.
Specify, yeah, so we would add member at large from. About two, two members at large from unincorporated.
Unincorporated areas in the county.
Are you gonna change all of them, so members from the planning area, you're gonna say from any areas?
Well, maybe.
Or same about Monticello, if you're gonna make it unincorporated, it's gonna be all.
Yeah, that's a really good point, so maybe it needs to say. Shall consist of seven members who shall be appointed from the following. Unincorporated areas of the county.
There you go.
See, I would argue against that, and I guess my reasoning would be that. I happen to live in unincorporated Blanding. But I own, you know, two houses in incorporated Blanding. I don't get to vote in Blanding, but you know, then I have the house in, so say I lived in one of those houses. I have the house in in unincorporated San Juan County, I I own. A farm and a highway property and I own other property, but. I mean, in unincorporated.
It's where you live.
Well, I'm just saying, though, we've had lots of, we've had lots of people that have been able to. I mean, I don't been able to. To understand, I mean, anyways, I just don't. I think you could be an incorporated Monticello, I think you can be an incorporated Blanding. I I don't think that's.
Can't you be an incorporated bluff?
Well, I would just.
I kinda see where Cody's coming from though, like, even though he. We still represent him in his other interests. So he still has.
He has to be a property owner of an unincorporated.
I mean.
I'm not arguing, I just understand.
The last time we discussed um the qualifications for candidate, you know, it talked about, you know, um, your qualifications. You know, and we're like, well, we don't really like that you're in land use or landowner, and we wanna make it more general and bring. But I think those people definitely represent the county in a different way.
Yeah, I agree.
Than the ones that don't, I mean, if you're a business owner, if you are a property owner, it you know. You have a different view.
Oh, I see what you're saying, oh, you you think that the property owners have a more.
I do.
Legitimate.
Yeah, I I do.
Cause I think we've got that covered with, out of all seven, we've got property owners, we've got land use people, we gotta have a variety. So, I mean, I don't think we want to limit it to only people with land use experience.
Okay, we're on two different topics. Yeah, are we okay with the way this articulates?
No.
Okay, so what changes, Anne?
Don't you think we need to update, um, so it reflects more of what we have, so we, instead of member from bluff area, we say member from Eastland or.
I think that's pigeonholing too much.
As opposed to pigeonholing Spanish Valley or La Sal?
Well, I mean, the the different driving distance from Eastland to Mexican hats an hour, right? You know, and and they just seem so far apart, and there's a lot of territory in between them.
So, oh, you think there would be, it would be unfair to someone in Mexican Hat that. They're competing with someone from.
I think maybe, you know, if you're going to have a. Yeah, I it just seems to me they're, I mean, why not pack grand, pack creek? I mean, it's like, why are you picking Eastland and?
I guess.
Mexican Hat.
My question would be along the same lines, is like, the Monticello area. If somebody from Eastland applied for the Monticello area unincorporated, would we not accept them as that position? So Eastland still could be. Covered without having them specifically named.
Okay, so we say. Instead of member from bluff, we do member from Mexican Hat, and then instead of a special service district, we say member from. Unincorporated Monticello? Is that?
Well, member from Monticello area, if we're already saying the unincorporated thing is up above.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I forgot, we do have.
We have a Monticello area, it's already.
Right, cause they're unincorporated, so then, and so that that covers Eastland, is what you're saying.
That's, that's what I would think, just reading this, but.
What do we got, we got three voting districts?
Sorry?
Three voting districts?
Yes.
So do two in each voting district and one uh special service.
Only have three, you have three voting districts.
And you wanna simplify it?
That's a really good idea.
What what are they called, or the voting district?
Well, and that makes it difficult, like, in Blanding, Blanding, all three. Split Blanding, and so that's, that's one of our concerns internally is. So you could get six from Blanding. But that's our districts, our districts to get the population balance that we are required to get. We have chopped up Blanding into three different pieces, which, yeah, makes it hard. So you could get six members from Blanding.
I will say with your.
No.
Or you could get, yeah.
Why don't we? Change bluff to Mexican Hat? And what can we do with the special service district? Make two members at large?
I was trying to think of an answer to what that question would be, and I, the special service district person. Will come with extra training on how the state works and extra training on all the bylaws and all that stuff, so. As far as like legalities of how a a board runs, it is kinda handy to have.
Cemeteries right now are conditional use in our zoning ordinance, and so they do, I mean, you do have to weigh in on cemeteries and.
And that's another thing, I mean, it.
Lloyd brings something special to this.
You've got, you've got service districts all over this entire county, so that is still an at-large position, it really is.
Okay.
Okay, well, thanks for um indulging me in that.
Thanks for trying to kick me out.
It was not personal, I wanna know if I come next month, you know.
Cody's kicking you out, Anne's kicking me out.
You're still good.
Okay, so the next one is uh Roman Roman numeral three point two, section A. Okay, so. It says the fourth um first. If the Board of County Commissioners has not appointed a new member to the commission at the expiration of term, the current commission members will remain on the planning commission. Um, until replaced by appointment at the Board of County Commissioner, so. I was, I brought this one up because it speaks to that. Open, in being able to open it up to more people in the the county, because if. Like, there's some of us that are have terms coming up due.
Yes.
Um, and they're gonna have to continue to serve unless someone can replace them.
Yes.
Right, and so.
Does it say you have to?
You don't have to show up tomorrow.
As long as you're willing.
Yeah, I think that's as long as you're willing.
Yeah, that, yeah, okay, as long as you're willing, but.
I was gonna say, I think I came in in October, not January one.
Yeah, so you, you're, you're filling some of its terms, and so. In the bylaws, if you're, if you do not attend so many planning commission meetings, you have that. I don't know if it's an opportunity, but we will kick you off.
Yeah.
And and which we had, and so we had to fill some terms that. Had not expired, the difficulty for staff just kinda in sight. When we put this out, typically we try to do November, if we don't get any letters of interest, you know, by the end of the year. Then it leaves us void, if you were to quit all of a sudden, so we hope that you will stay on if you don't. Choose to renew, which is another section in here that allows you to that renewal. So we hope you will stay on until that next person is approved by the commission so that we can move forward. Sometimes the stars don't align.
Right, so if we open up who can serve a little bit more, which I think we somewhat addressed.
I think so.
That that might help. I think I'm almost done. Uh, section four, Roman numeral four, section ten, um motions. So it says may, motion should be.
Are you still on section four?
Roman numeral four, section ten.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, motion should be supported by reason and include findings, is that for every motion? Or is that just on a legislative thing, because you know, I make a motion to.
Adjourn.
Right, because.
Tell me your findings.
I mean, do we have to put findings?
Cody is hungry and. Uh, no, but I think it's important to note on there, with the conditional use, you do have to make that motion with the findings. Um, so that we can capture those in the record. And maybe we just put.
But if necessary.
If required or if recommended or.
Movements may be supported.
Yeah.
The motion is encouraged in state.
Cause on conditional uses, that is critical that we get those, those findings of fact.
Motion should be supported.
Yeah, the the person making the motion is encouraged to state the reasons and findings. Supporting the motion at the time the motion is made.
It just elaborates on it a little bit more, but I I guess what I'm asking is, how? For every single motion, do we need to do that?
Uh, if necessary. Or encouraged.
If necessary.
But we have to for conditional use, I mean, that's.
So instead of, instead of it necessary, as needed.
As necessary, as needed.
As needed.
As needed, okay.
But but if you read further on, any um conditions for approval must be stated in that motion, that's for your conditional use, so.
So do we take?
A motion on anything else, it's encouraged to state your reasons and findings, but then as you read further on. Um, you you must um have your conditions for approval, because that's the only thing we approve. Is a conditional use, everything else is a recommendation. So I think that's.
It's kinda duplicate. This one here is stated below.
It's okay if it elaborates on that statement, motion should be supported by reason and include findings. The person making the motion is encouraged to state the reasons and findings supporting the motion at the time the motion is made. Any conditions for approval must be stated in the motion. So are we good with that language?
Think so.
Yep.
Roman numeral four, no, section eleven. I also highlighted the. Maintain order and decorum, remove disorderly or disruptive persons. Okay, and so. Um, any member of the commission, counsel to the commission or the commission staff, upon recognition by the chairperson, may direct any questions. To the applicant, witness, or any person speaking from the audience for the purpose of a listening of relevant facts. So that means that during a discussion, if there's a member. That made a public comment that's relative to something that we are discussing on the agenda. Then we can personally say, chair. Right, we can say, chair, can um, can we ask, right? Upon recognition by the chairperson, we may direct questions to the applicant, witness, or any person speaking from the audience. So there is a way for us via the chair to speak to the public.
One comment, you can't, you can't have a pub- a public hearing without the notice of a public hearing though, so. You could, by doing what you're, what you're talking about, all of a sudden create a public hearing that wasn't noticed. So you just wanna be careful of that, that's why you have the agenda. Um, listed.
What's it then, in what circumstance is this, you, can we follow this?
I think what Anne's is saying, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, it's just, I think it's just a matter of degree, I mean. If you have a question from someone from Elk Meadows about, now tell me how many lots there are, they can remind me, you you know, those are just. Little questions and answers that aren't really substantive necessarily, but if you're, if if you more or less take public comment and have a public hearing without it noticed.
We would just be for eliciting relevant facts as in, as is stated in the bylaws. So, okay, and I just, I felt like that's something to bring up, that we don't ever do that, and maybe um. We didn't know that was in the bylaws. That is a. Thing we can request the chair of the chairs to ask the question, a relevant fact question, not a public comment.
Right.
Okay, Roman numeral five, section three. A member with a conflict of interest may not attempt to influence other members or appointed staff outside the meeting. A member with a conflict of interest shall be required to recuse herself or himself from participating in commenting on or voting on the matter. In which such conflict exists. I'm reading that to mean, if you have a conflict. You cannot vote, is, are we all in agreement?
State statute allows for it, or bylaws pretty much say no.
Conflict, huh?
Said in earlier meeting, I think we all agreed.
To keep this.
To keep this.
Okay.
To not go with state law.
Okay.
But it says shall be required, who's the one that's gonna require it?
Well, where we disclose conflict of interest. At the front first of the meeting.
And then is it the chair that says, okay, I don't want you to vote or? Anything on this?
Well, don't we all just adhere to the bylaws, so if we know.
I know, but it's saying shall be. A member with a conflict of interest shall be required.
So take out the shall, is required?
I'm just wondering who is the person that's requiring it? When you say shall be.
That's our bylaws.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think. We as a body are.
Do we, do we take a vote on it when they uh bring up the conflict of interest, if they should shall vote on it?
I think you declare your conflict and then you recu- recuse yourself.
But that gives you the option, not do.
No, it doesn't, not shall, shall is you do it, may is it gives you an option.
So.
Yeah, I agree.
So keep it.
Then. Melissa already addressed the other one. Um, okay. Section, Roman numeral five, section six, ethical duty to make public. Each member of the commission has an ethical duty to avoid making public statements for or against the merits of any application. Before the commission hearing is concluded and a decision or recommendation has been rendered. So I feel like this is unclear, um, do we make it public or we avoid making it public? And could I, is there an example for this? Avoid making public statements.
Well, this would be, this would be, you know, an example of this would be. Um, let's talk about the tower that that came before us, if. I had told people I'm gonna vote against it when it comes up at the hearing, I mean. This disallows that. We're not allowed to share how we're gonna vote, even if we've already have an idea. Where, where are you getting stuck on it?
Um, I just felt like it was unclear. But now, it's getting late, so I can't, I'm not gonna dwell on that one. Um, and I'm thinking again, I know that was painful, but I'm done with that.
Till the next time it comes before us.
Okay.
So all the other changes you were fine with in there?
You know, one of the problems, gents, uh, the way this is posted. Says review and discussion of planning commission bylaws, it doesn't say. Vote to recommend to the.
So probably today you just, you have the changes and maybe when the changes come back, you can say, alright, changes are in, we're ready to vote.
Changes to your changes, huh?
Okay.
I think this is related to bylaws, but this is something I've been wanting to throw out. Every agenda, could we not have a follow-up section? That we address a question that the public has proposed or the commission has proposed. It comes up a lot where we ask a question that legal doesn't know, we need a follow-up.
Somebody needs to track that.
Yeah, close the loop, like we need the planning director to be able to write down, okay, we've got a follow-up on this one. This is a good, you know, we need to answer this question for the public and the commissioners at the same time. But you know, like adding an agenda section that's addresses some follow-up. Of relevant facts and, you know, things like that, like for example. Do we or do we not have to require sexually oriented businesses in a zone? You know, there was some controversy around that, or we, what's the answer, we just still don't know. But that topic came up, we never followed up on it, so nobody still knows what, where we land on that. That's the kind of thing, if we had it in the agenda, and it's not exactly bylaws, but. If, if it's part, it's kind of a procedural thing with the planning commission, it's a way that we can respond to the public. But on very, you know, specific things, not about our opinions on things, but, um, like kind of legal things. Would it not be helpful to open, or to provide that kind of, to try it at least? To provide something that is an opportunity for people to come back the next month and maybe get the answer to their question. You know?
I think it's a great idea.
Maybe you could somehow, them in the meeting, I mean, in the minutes. So when you come back the next month to approve the minutes and somewhere in the minutes will be have, you know.
Someone to ask this question.
Legal, legal, you know, questions or, I mean, you know, and then you can be like, okay. Were those answered? I, 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 I like what you're saying, I just don't know specifically how to do that.
I would imagine.
Since we're on the.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, TC.
If, if we're on the topic, I'll just, I'll just hop in here real quick. I, I really like Anne's point and I would suggest maybe we create two tables. One table that's questions that we come up with here in our legislative sessions. And a separate distinct table to where we capture and provide feedback to the public on public comments. I think both those would be useful.
Great idea. So this would be, that's something the planning director would track. And follow up on over the month and, but we at least can add it to our agenda as. Um, something we do.
So things don't get lost.
After approval of minutes, maybe would be appropriate because you'd be approving the minutes from the month before. Where you would see maybe some of the questions or, I don't know.
Follow-up.
Yeah, that's, that would be my request is that we add a s- a regular section to our agenda that. Cause some months we might not have follow-up questions, but we're needed follow-up. There's times we do and they just get lost in the ether, doesn't get tracked or come to ask.
Good idea.
And so do I need to make a motion to change?
Let me look at it and see what we can do.
Oh, okay, darn.
It's just, it'll be interesting to just try to distinguish on a staff level of what, what do we follow up on? I mean, as planning commissioners, part of your role is, you know, as the, as we get an adopted ordinance. It's your role to interpret that ordinance and then if you throw in follow-up questions and follow-up items. How do we track that on our side and does our follow-up now inject in a new record? That on an item that really is no longer on the agenda, it's on the previous agenda. So I just worry about the circular problems that that may create by having. This follow-up on an item that wasn't on the agenda.
Back, just, just to comment here, the, the agenda's of course wide open, you can create it. There's a way for adding items for the agenda, so any, any item that you want follow-up on. I think all you gotta do is make sure it gets on the agenda and also probably make sure there's an answer to it before you put it on, so. If it's something, for example, that you want the legal department to re- research and, and so forth, then. Just let us know and then say, is it done? If it is, I'm gonna put it on the agenda and then we'll address it, I mean, it's a great idea. And it might give, you know, some of the feedback that people are, are looking for. So I, I don't think it's that difficult of a concept, I think any item that you all want, you know, the process for putting it on, just put it on. Make sure there's an answer before you put it on.
Or, or, or no, you need to put it on because that way you, you're sure you get an answer, if, I mean, that's.
Well, yeah, so like when do, when do you, if you want an item on the agenda, for example, when do you submit that?
Wednesday, Thursday of the prior week.
So, yeah, I mean, so I think if, y- you know, just submit it and. Like I say, make sure that the answers in the works are already done. Then that'll be good.
Perfect.
Well, so, so what that's, what's that's doing though is it's making our resp- it, it's making it our responsibility to do it. As opposed to.
Staff.
Staffs, and as long as we take that on.
Yep.
Or the Mexican hat representative takes.
Okay. We good to move on? Uh, consideration and approval of a sign permit for CED is. Do we have a presenter?
So it's listed under Michelle. Echols Bud Signs. Basically, just kind of is from the staff report here, um, county received a sign permit application back in July. Located at eleven nine ten, South Highway one ninety-one. Within the Moab Business District Park in the packet, you see the picture of the building that that sign would be going on. Also, you have the reference to the ordinance here, um, that was provided in there as well.
Isn't that an error?
The staff report?
Isn't that not the right ordinance for this sign review?
So this would be your twenty, this would be the Spanish Valley.
No, that's the language out of the twenty eleven.
Okay.
And I, I put this out in email to everybody.
Did you? Okay, I.
And Mitch confirmed that we need to review this under the Spanish Valley sign ordinance.
Okay. So you're saying this language here, all signs shall be governed by federal and state highways, that language is in the twenty eleven. And not the Spanish Valley portion, cause I know the Spanish Valley ordinance. I didn't get a chance to, to look through this, just to cross-reference it with the twenty nineteen Spanish Valley ordinance, but. You could table this if there's that confusion, then we can bring it back.
Exercise for us to go through the sign ordinance.
But not the eleven?
It's eight ten, do we really want to?
If, if the presenter's not here, then, I mean.
Let's just table it.
Gotta have a vote and make sure you say what meeting you're tabling it to.
Sorry.
Who would like to make that motion?
Motion, we table this until the September. Where we can have the. New, uh, the Spanish Valley ordinance referenced.
And so the, this applicant needs to be contacted.
They actually don't.
Yeah, not all the time, yeah. Just depends, but it would have been nice.
Because they need, there's some different, there's more to it.
Mm-hmm.
In the Spanish Valley.
Yeah, the Spanish Valley includes kind of that dark sky initiative that had originally been put in place and. Yeah, let me follow up on this one.
I'll second Cody's.
Okay, got a motion and a second to table. The consideration and approval of a sign permit for CED on the basis that we used the wrong. Ordinance. For approval or non-approval, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, TC. No, any nays, I didn't hear. Oh, motion carries. Okay. Consideration after parcel reversal and remand from administrative law judge Cresswell. Of Loves Road Travel Stop.
Is it okay if I just do it from here?
You're driving.
I have a question before we even go any further. So if, if what, um. Colby Smith said is true is that the original loves was fifty-three bays. Right? And this new one, and he's, I counted and he's right, it is seventy-five bays. It, that is a significant change from what was originally proposed. And I don't know that we should be talking about that right now. If, if what was originally approved was fifty-three bays, right? And it's been remanded to us, why are we now looking at something with seventy-five bays?
Sure, good question, um, so the original approval is the only thing that's approved at this point. Um, that has been in the litigation process and if the new schematic is going to be. Become the official, then it'll have to be approved just through the normal course, so tonight you're not voting on that. Tonight you have a very specific question from the court or from Lynn Cresswell. And we're, we're gonna cover all three, right, cause we determined that last meeting, we wanna. So, so there are three questions that, um, administrative law, law judge has asked of you. That, does everybody know the background here or do I need to go over it again? I, I don't want to. Everybody's familiar, right? Okay, so, um, Judge Cresswell has asked that you make findings on the following. Three items, one is, is loves the proper applicant? And the question there has to do with, you know, the ordinance is for the landowner to be the applicant or designee. Okay, number two is, is the, is the travel center, the Loves Travel Center. Is it a, is it a permitted use within the ordinance? And then number three is. If you, you know, if you don't find it's a permitted use, alternatively, is the, is the use. In harmony with the intent of the neighborhood commercial zone and similar in nature to the listed permitted uses in the highway commercial zone. So those are the three items. Um, a lot of the questions and concerns which are good and valid and have been talked about here in other meetings. A lot of those will be addressed, uh, I think during the litigation and also. At some point, you know, you have to have permitting and, and, you know, there's quite a process here. So a lot of those things are, will be addressed, it's just that tonight, your job is quite focused on these questions. So let's talk about the, is, is loves the, uh, a correct applicant or a proper applicant? Do you have, do you want any discussion on that or anything for me on that, or do you feel like you know what you wanna do?
No, I agree with that, for the simple fact that your due diligence when you're buying a piece of property to make an investment, you. Are the applicant even though you don't own the property, because you're looking at your options before you do, before you buy it. That is done in all cases for development.
Your, your purchase agreement generally has that requirement that, you know, you work together with the landowner and you are the. Designee, if you wanna call it that, to run it through the process. Do you wanna do these individually or go through all three and then?
Can I, can I argue, can I argue? Trent, can I argue?
Man, can you?
Nothing's up to you yet.
So I'm looking at the packet and even the packet calls in a fifty-three base truck station. You know, I don't think we can vote on something that has changed midstream.
Well, like, like I said, that.
I, I understand what it, I.
Yeah, you're, I think you're confusing the issues that are before you.
No, I get that, I get what the issues are, because part of it is, it's not in harmony, right? Or is it in harmony, and I've already stated my opinion about that, but.
So sorry, when you get to that point, you have to vote on what's been approved, not what something new is.
Well, so we're voting on fifty-three bays?
You, you vote on whatever schematic was approved initially, not a new thing that hasn't gone through the approval.
So.
That's what you'll be considering.
Okay, well, in this packet, what schematic do we have?
Well, in this, in this packet, we have, in the language, we have fifty-three bays. But the drawing that they included had seventy-five.
Okay, there's a problem.
Okay. Well, uh, alright, let's.
I mean, does that fly with you guys?
Let's just, let me just, as far as the presentation here goes, let me just. Um, do you, do you wanna go through each point, in other words, the application, the permitted use? Whether it's permitted use and then whether it's in harmony, you, you wanna go through all those and then a vote on all, or do you wanna go through one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay. One thing about th- this whole exercise is so that. The, the commission here can have a detailed findings, detailed findings on why you're voting the way you're voting. And this staff report that's been prepared was designed to give you the language, but you don't have to stick to that language, you can come up with your own. Um, so on the question then of, of the is loves a proper applicant. Uh, do you need anything more from me on that before you motion and vote and deliberate?
What was the date of the purchase agreement?
Oh, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think it's relevant to the question you're keen to ask.
It was a while ago, I remember it from last meeting, it was, it wasn't recent, it wasn't just after this depi- uh, opinion came out.
I mean, the purchase agreement is the first thing in this overall process, so it would have predated probably everything, that's just my speculation.
In my mind, number one is the only one we should vote on that we've already decided, the other, he just wanted it more defined. The decision was already voted on, and now we have it back here going through it again. But the first question is the only question I feel like we haven't answered. Is finding that he wanted, you know, a more complex or defined reason why it was in harmony. Or, I mean.
That's the privilege of being a judge, you get to ask additional questions.
But he's asking, he's asking. All of us who aren't attorneys to make a long drawn-out. Motion describing every little detail, why we think that, we, the last motion did, I feel like.
The last motion did, I feel like, I I. I don't even wanna vote on two and three, cause I feel like they've already been answered, I. I think one is the only question that's really relevant. The judge doesn't like what we did before, then I don't know, he can pound sound for all I care. But but one is a legitimate question that we haven't answered before.
Well, and I'd like to make a motion on it. Okay, I motion. That yes, the applicant um for that should have been. Loves or um. The people purchasing it because that's how all cases go with development. You are the applicant when you are trying to figure out if this is a the right property to purchase. If it is going to meet. Um, does the ordinance meet the requirements of what you want to do with that land, you're not gonna purchase it. And then say, oh, well, this doesn't work for what I'm doing, so yes, they the applicant was the right one on this one.
So Lloyd, do you? The language that's there in the staff report for number one, those those reasons, those findings, um.
Can we go to that?
If you, well, if you, if if those words are the words you, if you agree with those, then. I recommend you use those so that. We're trying to be as specific as we can.
Jen's is hoping the judge likes his wording there and it doesn't come back, so.
Okay, so my motion is, you want me to read all this or are you good with me just stating?
You can say, uh.
The, my motion is to go with the staff recommendation to approve the following findings.
Something like my motion, I I make a motion that that Loves is a a. The correct applicant based on.
Is the land use applicant.
Based on number one and then subsections A, B, C, and D of the staff report, something like that.
Okay, so my my motion is to recommend the staff's recommendation. One with A, B, and C. Within the staff report.
What about D?
And D. And D, sorry.
And there's nothing underneath it, cause I can't tell.
Mm hmm.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. To. Adopt the staff's. Report that Loves is the land use applicant. And. Addition to that, A, B, C, and D. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Bye.
Any opposed, thanks TC. Hearing none, motion carries.
Okay, item number two, um. This one, I think, is the. In my opinion, it's the most difficult, uh. You know, the the public comment has been heavy on this point and. You know, there there are really good arguments for and against whether or not um. It it's a permitted use and one way of looking at it is to say. If the components of the travel stop individually can be constructed within the highway zone, then why not one combined? That's maybe in a nutshell, one side of it. The other side of it is to be a little bit more strict with the statute and just say, look, if if. The legislative body, which is the county commissioners and this body, if you all wanted a travel station, you would have. Uh, approved one and stated it specifically, and if you wanted the. Uh, ordinance amended to allow it, you would amend and allow it. You know, that those are two, you know, logical ways of looking at this. In the staff report, you have kinda laid out some some ways of looking at it. You talk about the restaurant or the drive-in cafe, the automobile service station or convenience store. Uh, kinda lays out how you could see those as. Uh, being the components of the Loves' Travel Center and. If they can be constructed individually, side by side, then why not together as one? You know, I I I think anyone that. Resides, you know, next to this type of a project is. You know, uh justified in feeling um impacted for sure and. Uh, there's no question that. Any new development is gonna change the status quo. And. The legal department really looks at this as. A competing interest of landowners and. You know, landowners' rights and and. Um, also in connection with, you know, what an ordinance allows, in reality. If if our ordinance said. Loves' travel stations are allowed in this zone, then you know, you wouldn't have much to. Really debate, right?
I'm sure we would.
But you. But you're paid the big bucks because you have these, you know. Cause these questions are never quite that easy. Um, I do, I do wanna point out one thing, uh, Mr. Shapiro pointed out about the. And and it's been mentioned before, the Ombudsman's case. And, you know, the Ombudsman's Office writes these opinions and they're very good and I think that. You know, they're well reasoned and researched and all that kinda thing. Two things on that point, one is. The Ombudsman's Office is not the same as a. You know, a district court judge or an appellate court judge. It's advisory and it's helpful. But you all have a lot of discretion and you can, there's nothing wrong with you saying we agree with the Ombudsman's decision. There's nothing wrong with you saying, you know. It's a close call and we just see it the other way, so we're going the other way. Second. It should be noted that the ordinance associated with that decision was very different from our ordinance. That ordinance did not have permitted uses. So you couldn't under that ordinance say, well, it's, you had conditional uses. And um. That's a pretty significant difference, uh. And that may be one reason the decision up there. Doesn't mean you couldn't adopt its logic, I'm just saying it's not exactly the same as your ordinance, where your ordinance does have. Permitted uses that combined appear to create a travel center. And they're not just all conditional, so anyway, I just wanted to point out that there is some difference in those in in the two decisions. But. You know, the Ombudsman's decision does have good reasoning, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't say that I. Have any concern with the reasoning of the Ombudsman's decision.
Jen, are you saying that the Ombudsman's ordinance that they're referencing?
It was an ordinance in Wellsville that's just a different, it's it's different than our ordinance.
I get, I I, so what was different exactly?
So in our ordinance, there are permitted uses in the commercial highway zone. And in that ordinance, they were all conditional uses, not permitted. So it's kinda one step. From an automatic, hey, if it's permitted, I get to do it. If it's conditional, maybe I get to do it. This board has a lot more discretion if it's conditional.
So their truck stop was conditional?
What's that?
Their truck stop was conditional, was listed as conditional in the Wellsville, is that what you're saying?
Well, in order, in order, conditional, the issue there was. You had conditional uses that were the components of a. Travel center and. The group there said, well, we would like to say that if. We could, we could approve the components of it, let's just approve. The comp, just approve the thing itself, but it was a conditional use, they had to approve it under a conditional use standard, whereas. This statute has permitted uses, not conditional.
I guess I don't know what the differ, I don't understand.
Well, if if there's.
How that really matters.
If there's a permitted use, you, the applicant, are entitled to approval because it's a permitted use. It's not conditional, if it's conditional, then the applicant's not necessarily entitled to it.
Isn't the argument that you can't combine those? To be one, even if it's just permitted?
No.
I'm trying to think of how to answer that question. The best way I think to look at it is to say that where you have permitted uses, the applicant's position is. Stronger if the use they're asking for is allowed, if it's permitted. If the use is is conditional, then the applicant's position is not as strong. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is the applicant's position in the Ombudsman's case. Was not as strong because they weren't coming in saying, hey, I want, I'm applying for this Loves' Travel Center, it's a permitted use. I'm taking the position it's a permitted use. And if this group says, yeah, it's permitted use, it's just a combination of these things, then that's a different discussion then. It's not even a permitted use, it's a conditional use, so it may not even be something we wanna have.
Well, I think the overarching point of that. Argument is whether or not you should look at. Different uses as something you can combine and mix and match.
Right, under two different standards, under that standard up there, under a conditional use analysis. Under this standard, under a permitted use analysis.
Right, which is really not that different, I don't think, because we're still asking that same question, should we be allowing permitted things to?
I'm not saying that it's like, you know, here and here, I'm just telling you there is a difference.
Okay, well.
I just wanted to.
I just, I just wanted to see how big this difference was.
I would mention it.
So say, say you take the Moab Business Park, you've got on that, the one on the roadside. It has ten units in it, okay? Each one of those are a different permitted use in each one of those storefronts. It's all under one roof, how do you decipher the difference between that building? And the Loves' Travel Center? If it has multiple uses that are all permissible, how could you say that this building you can do it in, but this one you can't? You see what I'm saying? That's the, that's.
Under the two thousand and eleven ordinance.
Exactly, that we've agreed on that is is where this fell. That's what this is going through is the two thousand and eleven ordinance, and they were permissible uses, it. You take it from one building that's less than, you know, a thousand yards away, that can have all these permitted uses in it. But you go to the next building that's coming in, you can't have the same permitted uses.
But the type of uses is what's different and and so I I wasn't around for the Moab Business Park application, but I imagine they listed. The kinds of uses and they aren't things like a gasoline filling.
Yeah, but we've already agreed that these are permissible use, the the argument is, can all these be in as combined?
Right.
So, I mean, we've agreed, this came before us before and it was. Did all the uses that are gonna be within this one building, are they a permissible use in the two thousand and eleven ordinance? Yes, they are, now the the question is, is can they be combined? You can have them combined in the Moab Business Park building right here, but you can't do it in this one.
Right, because the imp, uh, the use type is so different. You've got different impacts with the.
But but anybody from Moab Business Park could have had a restaurant at any time in any one of those units, cause it was permissible in the two thousand and eleven ordinance.
As I think, I'm still gonna say or argue that the impacts of those uses in the business park do not require conditions or mitigating factors.
Who's to say?
Well, I think, do we, we go down the list of self safety, health, welfare?
Yeah, and the business parks on a smaller footprint with more businesses than this one is.
Yeah, but do any of them put out pollutants, do any of them create excessive noise, do any of them?
Who's to say? Do you know what businesses are being ran in there?
I have no handful of them.
But you don't know all?
But they're low impact, I mean, they're.
That you know for a fact.
What?
They're low impact.
Well, at, as far as my measuring tool, I would say that a climbing gym is pretty low impact, a quilt shop is low impact. There's a gun shop there, I mean, it's not a shooting range, they sell guns. What, I mean, they're, they don't require a lot of traffic, they're not putting out. Toxins, I mean, so it's it's really like to me, not the same um comparison, but. I just wanted to say, Jen, I feel like something's missing from the staff report here. When it comes to number two, Loves' proposed proposed use is permitted in the CDH zone based upon the following findings. There's not one that says, you know, the flow chart, where's the other option, Loves' proposed use is not permitted in the CDH zone based upon the following findings. I mean, where's that language that you're providing us if we wanted to go in that direction?
I guess if you go in that direction, then it's it's almost like there's, all you have to say is really it's not permitted. I mean. If it's not, if it's not a permitted use, then it's not a permitted use. And if if you want, I mean, I I get what you're saying, why didn't I write just the same on the other side? Good point, probably should have.
Right, because otherwise it feels.
But you can make the findings.
And feels like our options are limited to this.
No, 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 they're not, they're not limited at all, this is the staff's recommendation. That's that's what we're providing to you, is the recommendation, but if you find differently. Then we just, you would, we would just adopt some findings, I mean, I I don't. We'll just work through it, right?
Well, there there is an alternative, the twenty eleven ordinance says if it's not listed as a permitted use.
And last time.
It is a conditional use.
Okay, well, last time we got to this one and we, sorry, I I thought you were going somewhere else, go ahead, sorry.
And it says all other uses than those listed, so. You know, I know we had a vote back however long ago that was. And there was a group that thought that. You could combine all those permitted uses and but the alternative is. And it's quite clear in the ordinance. That if it's not listed, it's all other uses than those listed as a conditional use.
So you could, so you could, you could go that route if that's what this group wants to do, that's.
Well, and then, so the other language in the staff report I have a question about is going down to number or B. Alternatively. It says alternatively, the Loves' use is in harmony with the intent, so you're, that sounds like. Instead of saying. That the proposed use fits within the following combined uses, we could say. That it's in harmony with the intent.
Right, so there's, there's, there's two prongs that you could approve this or disapprove it. One prong is the permitted use and the other prong is the in harmony with.
Okay. So again, alternatively, there's not language that says. Loves' use is not in harmony with the intent of the neighborhood.
Right, that's because that wasn't our recommendation.
They're recommended.
If you have a, I mean, the simple, the simple way. We looked at this was if you have a highway commercial zone, any permitted use within that zone would be in harmony, cause that's what the zone is. I mean, how could you? How could, how could you not allow a permitted use to be in harmony with the zone it's permitted in, that's kinda the whole. That, I guess that would be a way of.
So, and so here's the other point to that, so a lot of the conversation tonight was building next to residents. The residences that are in that zone were put in there illegally. They were never a permissible use in a commercial zone. They were put in after, what was it, nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine? When the thousand-foot commercial zone was put in place, then we're not a permissible use. So the residences that are near the Loves' Truck Stop or Travel Station, gotta careful how you say that. Were not a permissible use in the first place. So you can't come in and say, hey, I built illegally in a certain zone and now I don't want something else that is a permissible use next to me. So the the harmony thing is, is it is in harmony with the way it was set forth from day one when it became a commercial zone. Because other people moved in illegally into that zone. Um, does not make it not in harmony, and then you go back to the whole. Truck pollution and all that, less than a quarter mile away, we have Lickran Johnson that runs sixty to eighty semis. Every single day, in and out to the scales. I mean, it is in harmony with what is near it, in in every aspect of what they are doing here. It is in harmony in the commercial zone, in harmony with the other trucks that are down the road. I just, I I see no way to get around that.
One point, just, I. I'm not. I don't know about the legality of the initial homes, what the zoning was and approvals and stuff, you know, it was. I don't know about the legality of the initial homes, whether, what the zoning was and approvals and stuff, you know, it was little different world back then, and I don't know what kinda approvals were going on. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, s- I wouldn't suggest that any of the current homes there are, you know, we're not calling you illegal. I'm just saying, that's, that's not my op- opinion. I, I think what Lloyd is basically saying is you have this zone that's commercial, but yet there is residential housing there, and so.
That it was their choice to.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean.
Well, it was a controlled district, right? If I, if I remember right, it was a controlled district.
It was highway commercial for a thousand feet.
Yeah, I mean. But some, some of that, I mean, in my opinion, is not, I don't know how relevant it is to your question. If you, so are you, are you moving off of, are we, are we moving off of the permitted use question to the in harmony? That's kind of what we did the last time because it was. And it's okay, I just, I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to keep you focused on, do you wanna talk about the permitted use and vote one way or another? Or you wanna go to the in harmony and talk about that?
I think, in order to decide between the two, we need to flesh it out, that's what I'll, I'm just asking.
Okay, sure.
Questions.
Sure. I'll do my best.
And the harmony question, I think we've interpreted it different ways. You sound like it, make it sound like it's implicit, if, you know, if it wasn't permitted, it wouldn't be in harmony. Like, we wouldn't put a use as permitted if we didn't think it'd be in harmony with that zone. But there's a little bit of conflicting language around this because it specifically says as, as the purpose, and you've got it here, um, provide inappropriate locations in district where agriculture, industrial, commercial resident, and residential uses may exist in harmony based on planned development for mutual benefit and flexible location of uses. So to me, I read that as this development has to be in harmony with the surrounding uses.
Only if it was planned, a planned development. It was never planned that way. Read that again, would you?
Okay, to per- the purpose of the control district, district is to provide inappropriate locations in district where agriculture, industrial, commercial, and residential uses may exist in harmony based on planned development for mutual benefit and flexible location of uses. So, am I not understanding that correctly? To be that it needs to be in harmony with surrounding uses?
Well, that's, that's the question, is how are you interpreting it? That's the, that is the, that is your task tonight, is to interpret that.
So three sides of it are all commercial?
Well, and that's where I argue, that may be what it's being taxed as, uh, commercially. Cause there's revenue being generated, but the use is very residential, the short term rentals that were built right behind there. Again, my argument, I repeat of this, I'll just repeat it again, there are people sleeping in those units.
Are considered commercial.
There are people sleeping in the business park.
People sleep in trucks.
It's a residential use.
So to help the discussion a little bit, let me ask you a question. If, let's just say a new gas station, uh, a convenience store with pumps and, you know, if, if that were to be proposed there, would it, would it in your mind be in harmony? Not, not a travel center, I'm talking about just a, just a. A conven- yeah, maybe a Maverick.
I think it would be much more in harmony than a.
And, and why, why is that more in harmony than the travel center?
Because.
So is it the size and the overall impact, or, or is it the types of, cause you were talking about the uses? And I think in a Maverick, you'd have more or less the same uses, just maybe not as same volume.
Right, it's not a travel center with, what, how many bays? Seventy-five potential bay.
So volume, that's what, that's what I'm trying to help you, like, flesh out here. It comes down to volume to a degree, is that what you're saying, or?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, volume and the use is.
So what if two Maverick stores decided to come in side by side? Would the second one be, you would say, no, this is, this is too much, this is too much Maverick store?
Why, I would think that would be, most people would say, yeah, we don't need two gas stations side by side.
But as a permitted use in the ordinance, would you have a legal basis to say, you know, why would you be able to say, see what I'm saying? If it's permitted use and Maverick decides, hey, we wanna, we wanna build side by side, we just like it that way.
And that is why we are not operating anymore under the two thousand and eleven ordinance. And Spanish, we're trying not to.
It becomes this difficult question of, where's the line?
But because this body chose to look at this truck stop under two thousand and eleven, I feel like that is not, um, relevant to this case.
That was required because of the timing of the application. I mean legally, you have to look at it under that ordinance, because it was.
But the proposal to have two gas stations next to each other is not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a travel center.
Right, Michael was just trying to put it in perspective, uh, what, what it is, that is deciphering your decision, is it the volume or the use? And more or less, you came down to, it was the volume, it wasn't the use, because a Maverick would be the same thing other than the showers. It'd be identical. And so what bothered you was the volume, not the use?
How about the volume of the use? That type of use, volume of that particular use.
I mean, if you, if you feel that that makes it non-harmonious, then that's your finding, you know? If that's, if you're saying there's a line somewhere, it becomes non-harmonious at some point, then wherever that is for you, that's your finding. And that's what, that's the discussion.
It sure seems like we can find on both counts that it's not permitted and it's not in harmony. But is this a, just pick one?
So you, uh, well, I think it'd be good to answer both, because then if there's a question as it goes back into the legal process, answering both would be good, because if the court sees a problem with one answer or the other, it might be able to fall back on one or the other.
Can, can I just point out, um, something else? I agree with Ann about the harmony when you read that, that they're all supposed to coexist. And, and our, the twenty eleven zoning ordinance actually talks about all those things as well. So this ordinance is designed and enacted for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of San Juan County. Including, among other things, the lessening of congestion in the streets or roads, securing safety from fire and other dangers, providing access to adequate light and air, and then it goes on and talks about land development. But you know, what, what we've heard so much about, and we all know that neighborhood, is that, you know, this will create fumes, it will create noise, it will create congestion. And it's not, it's seventy-five, it's seventy-five truck bays and seventy-eight car bays. So that's a, that's in their new one. So what is that? That's a hundred and fifty-three parking spaces.
So where do we, I guess when you go down those lines, where do we draw our line? You, we talked about fire and health safety, like, well, the health department regulates health, this, safety, the, the emissions, that kind of stuff. How do, why, why would that fall on me, eh, us as a board, I guess?
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons I mentioned in the beginning that, you know, eh, for loves to go through this process and do the development, think of all the different steps it has to go through. In the permitting stage and the approval stage with different departments and, you know, so forth. So, I'm not a, I mean, I'm not an expert on everything they have to show and so, y- y- you know, but these things are you all can't be the EPA or the, y- y- you know, you, it, it's, uh, it's fine for you to consider whatever you feel you wanna consider. If you wanted reports, it would be okay to ask loves to get them and look through them, and, you know, that's no, not a problem. But, y- you know, the, the scope of your task here is a little more narrow, but also, you know, at some point, you kind of have to say, look, we approve things based on the ordinance, what's approved, what's not approved. And other experts have to do their jobs down the road. I mean, you're, you're just not involved in all of those steps.
Right, but, 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 well, w- let me just, but we do that, when, when we approve a lot of things and we make it conditional. We throw those things in there, right?
I'm not, I'm not saying you shouldn't consider.
That it meets the fire codes and it meets with condition, we put conditions on it.
Which they already have the conditions on this, because they're a commercial business. They've, they've gotta meet their fire codes, they have to meet the health department, they have to. So we're not making a recommendation or a conditional use, we are, we are answering three questions at this point.
It's just.
Yes, you know, one way or the other.
From what perspective are you answering these questions?
As in which one?
As in, whether or not this is, um, its impacts for the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Um, okay, so the way I look at it is the corner lot right there belongs to U-Haul. Next lot in has a house and a camper in front of it that run a commercial business with, um, containers. Across the street from it, you have Zunich's. You have a, um, a storage, uh, facility owned by a member of the community other. Um, we're looking at two to three residents on that north end there. Everything else surrounding it is commercial projects and businesses. Everything else surrounding it is in harmony one hundred percent. Is it affecting anybody? Um, as in congestion, I mean, you couldn't get any more congested than the next turn. That they won't do anything about that camp park. Um, it, and I can promise you as project this size, um, Doppel is gonna make them put in bigger turning lanes, things like that, so I'm guessing the congestion's not gonna be there. I've actually seen the plans on it, they have an entrance, they have an exit.
Well, this stuff didn't come up when we were, eh, it kind of came up, but like the congestion thing, I understand the struggle with it, but we also just approved the U-Haul to go in where the business park is. The business park from one end all the way to the nightly rentals that were just put in on the other end, all accessed through the same congested area. This is gonna not be as congested, so as far as that goes, that's the least of my concerns in this one. And while, while I appreciate the arguments of the health concerns and that kind of stuff, and I, and I understand that I'm not an expert, so I don't fully understand the data, but I understand that it's there. The health department is the professionals here, so if I was to vote against it simply based on health concerns or something like that, well, the health concerns for me, from my point of view, it's all speculation. Versus handing it over to people who regulate this and have the data and actually have laws and stuff that, that govern them. Uh, for me, it's, I'm speculating that they're not gonna meet health goals, so I'm not gonna vote for them. I don't think that's right, that's not fair of me to.
But you are also speculating that they do have that regulated without seeing their reports.
No, I'm trusting that the process down the line, the health department will take care of that for me. I'm not speculating that it's healthy, I'm not speculating any of that stuff. I'm trusting that the process will weed out all of those concerns and make it as appropriate as anybody can.
And again, like on the, uh, exhaust things, I mean, Trent, you can correct me on this, I mean, the majority of the trucks and semis running down the road nowadays are following, falling under the emission laws. Cause otherwise they can't even cross the California border, they can't truck. So they're, they're all running the, um, DPF or exhaust fluids and things like that to reburn and, and to get rid of the emissions coming from diesel. I mean, they're cleaner than a gas engine nowadays. There's more requirements on a, on a diesel engine than there is on a gas engine anymore. There's, uh, most of your commercial vehicles like that have inspections where your gas vehicles that you drive every day uh, do not require an inspection anymore. Where the diesel, any, any commercial vehicle has to have the inspections yearly on the emissions. So, I mean, that's, that's just the way I look at it.
Okay, so here's another perspective that I think is really important that we look at this from. And that is, what is our role as planning commissioners? We need to remember that we are not representing the developer, we are representing the residents.
We understand that.
The county. And, eh, I think we all agree, there is far more pushback on this development than there has been pushed for. I don't know when the last time we got an email of anybody saying, go loves.
And I just wanna, I just wanna correct, I think, I think, I think that statement's not accurate. As, you know, the, the applicant is a landowner and has all the same rights as the other landowners involved. Your job is to represent everybody.
Including the property developer, sure, but
I'm just, I'm not saying you have to.
One developer impacting the entire valley.
You can.
And not see that there is a dis- uh, an imbalance of where.
I just wanted to say that, you know, you're, you're, you're working, you're, you're working for everybody.
Yes, we also have to represent the landowner who is, uh, loves.
But at the same time, how about the other two hundred people that we talk to every day that are all for it?
Then they need to come to the table and put in public comments.
Why? There's a committee out there that'll take all their, everything they have to say and bring it back to us and speak for them.
What do you mean?
That's the other committee that's going on in this county, and that's for the people that don't wanna show up. They can get all their response to this committee, the committee can, um, come in and, and give their information. I don't agree with that. And so as a representative of a lot of people in Spanish Valley, I talk to these people, that's who I'm representing.
Well, I'm sorry.
You are representing the group of people that you talk to.
Then you need to share that ex parte communication with us, so we can see this pushback. Or push for, you know, what I'm saying.
Gonna make your decision on behalf of who you were representing.
I, I am making my decision based on every public comment that we've gotten. All of us mutually have received. If you're receiving comments that are against this truck stop.
So you weren't.
We're not here to, to judge public comment, we're here to interpret the land rights and uses.
That's right.
I don't, I mean, as much as I love the neighbor and her comments and she hates it. And that's not what I'm listening to, or that's not what we're supposed to be listening to, we're supposed to look and say, is it an automobile service station? That's the, eh, that's the question. Do they have that right?
Yes, they are asking for something very reasonable, which has proved to us that this is going to be safe. Show us the data, show, have loves.
But, eh, Ann, tonight, tonight the questions are just more focused. I mean, i- i- if, if it's a permitted use, that's what we're asking you to decide. If it's not, then it's not, you know? And then if it's one way or another, then you've got the harm, the harmony with, in harmony with the surrounding area. And, and that's all you're doing tonight. A lot of this other stuff, I think, is.
Important to remember, cause we have the choice.
If you wanna tie it, if you wanna tie all these issues to your analysis of, is it a permitted use or not, is it in harmony, I guess that's fine. But I just, I'm trying to keep us from getting too far out in the weeds.
I think this is very relevant, because we have the option to choose to say this is not a permitted use and it needs mitigation. And that would be the ultimate compromise to the public who has pushed back so much on this.
You should make, you should make the, I mean, you can make the motion.
But I'm, I just wanna finish why my reasoning is like this, because this is not gonna be the last controversial development that's proposed in San Juan County, and we need to ha- show that we are listening to the residents. But if we choose to ignore, when the next one comes up, we are going to have even, I mean, I just feel like the distrust is already at such a weak point. By considering the option that it is not a permitted use and go down the road where it is a conditional use, allows us, allows the county to demonstrate its, its, um, role as listening and being responsive to the people. And in it, based on something that's very rel- um, reasonable that they're asking is we are, we have concerns, we need to address their concerns, and we have not done that. By saying black and white, the ordinance says this or that, is not addressing their concerns. So, I'm proposing. So I'm proposing as a diplomatic move. As planning commissioners, we look at an option to look, to choose to go the not permitted. And that it is a, uh it requires a conditional use, so.
Well, I just, I just want, I just want you to know that, I just want you to know that as far as the legal department goes. Even though the report may not appear to do so, we considered everybody's rights and views and. I don't, I, I really, I honestly did, I really did, I'm not just saying that.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it, wait, should I, I, I just wanna make sure I motion with my findings.
Okay.
Properly. Um, I would like to motion that the um Loves is. Application is um. Not a proposed use under the two thousand eleven.
Not a permitted use.
I'm, I'm sorry, not a permitted use in the uh two thousand eleven San Juan County ordinance. Um, based upon the following findings, that. A travel stop is a distinct land use with significantly different impacts. Anybody wanna add to my motion?
I will.
Okay.
And it isn't, and it is not in harmony with the surrounding area.
And it is not in harmony with the surrounding area because.
Because.
Of the surrounding uses being uh residential, being um.
Mixed use.
Mixed use with a large number of res- residential use.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to. That Loves is not a permitted use in the commercial highway district. Two thousand eleven, it's not in harmony and it's.
Um, it, it's not in harmony because of the um surrounding existing mix, res- residential use.
Okay, everybody kinda followed that? Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a request, I guess, to Ann and Melissa. Um, do you guys think that we would be better served separating those two motions back out? So just have one distinct motion on number two, whether it is a permitted use or not. Or conditional use, and then a separate motion on step three, whether it's in harmony.
What you're thinking TC about why to separate them?
Well, honestly, Melissa, because I like one of them and I don't like the, the other one, to be, to be, to be quite frank. Uh, I, I think Jen's has presented them as two separate issues, we took the first one on its own merits. I think it's fair that we take the second one on its merits and the third uh individually on its own, to be honest. However, it's your motion, um, you know, I just wanna throw that out there for my comment.
So I, I don't think that would hurt to make them separate, so um, I'm.
Gonna withdraw the motion?
I withdraw the motion and re-motion. That Loves application is um not a permitted use in the, in CDH z- zone. Under the two thousand eleven Spanish Valley, I mean, San Juan County ordinance. Based upon the following findings that it is a distinct. A travel stop is a distinct land use with significantly different impacts.
I second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second.
And it requires a conditional use. Think I need to say that too, or?
No, it says all others are per- are conditional.
Okay.
That Loves is not a permitted use in the CDH zone based on. A travel center would not fall under the restaurant or automobile service station definitions.
Well, can, can I, I don't think she was that specific.
Okay.
I, I think if once you do that, then we're in more trouble.
Okay. All right, strike the automobile service station, cause she didn't say that, nor the restaurant, she didn't say that.
Sorry, tuned out. Thanks, Melissa.
Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Four, three. Motion is denied.
Fails.
Fails.
I motion. I'm making a motion that the proposed use is a permitted use. Including all within one, as, as for what the staff report says. Talking about item two, A through. A through. A one and two through D.
D.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second that Loves. Where does it start now?
You can just say it's just item number two. I kinda lost it.
Okay, that Loves is a permitted use in the CDH zone based on the following findings, and that's the staff report. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
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 Okay, four to three, motion carries. Now, is B is, that's not three, is it?
We did two B.
B is the, B is the second prong of two. So what you just approved, as far as the staff report was two, A. And then including, you know, subsection one, A and B, subsection two, A through D. B, B is about the harmony, uh in harmony with the neighborhood. I, I think it's good to answer this, like I say, just in case, for whatever reason. Someone doesn't like the answer to number one, but they do like your findings on number two, or this second part.
I'll make a motion that. So, I'm gonna reiterate my motion from earlier. That uh the Loves travel stop is not in harmony with the intent of the neighborhood or the commercial zone. Or similar in nature to the listed permitted uses in the CDH zone because. Of the existing residential use surrounding. The develop, the applicant's land, um, the proposed. Um, development, the trucks, the travel stop, and that. And that, um. Concerns around the safe, the health, safety and welfare of the community have not been addressed by this board or this county.
Okay, got a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second, that, I'm not gonna try to follow all of that motion, but I'm gonna just say that. Loves is not in harmony with the intent of the neighborhood commercial zone. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I guess I got a quick question on this, and may- maybe now's not the right time to bring it up, but. We did hear last month from the Loves representative that he did have uh some studies and data. Uh, that, that was completed by them, and it was brought up again today in public comment. Um, about those studies and data, I guess my question is on process. Uh, I guess it's probably for Jen's, what, have you guys seen that? Will, will we have an opportunity as a P and Z body to see it, or is that? Not for us to see, or where, where does that come into play, if at all?
I think we need to see it.
Yeah, it, it's okay for you to ask for it, um, I, I have not seen it. Um, we would just need to ask Loves to provide it. If the, if the group feels like they don't have enough information to answer this part. Then, y- you know, you could, you could make that finding and request this information. Um, it's up to you.
Okay.
All right. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Trent.
Oh, no, but I, I fully support your thought there. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion that Loves is not in harmony, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Five to two.
I make a motion that the Loves is, the Loves use is in harmony with the uh. Neighboring commercial zone and the zone that's within. Including all of A through. It's two B, uh Lloyd, two B. Including all of two B.
Yeah.
And everything is.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second that. Loves use is in harmony with the intent of the neighborhood commercial zone. And similar in nature to the listed permitted uses in the CDH zone. Any further discussion?
Yep, so would this be a good place uh to bolt on to. Uh Lloyd's motion here that we request that documentation from Loves. Uh, to, to back up our assertion that it is harmonious with the commercial highway district.
I wouldn't add it to my motion.
Yeah, we lost that opportunity because we chose not to require conditions like that. In my opinion, and other conditions that would have been reasonable to add.
But this is just a step where we're at right now, we were asked three questions, we're answering the questions. And before the process goes any further, you'll, you'll get documentation.
Okay, all those in favor.
Was there a second? I can't remember if, oh, sorry, okay.
Of that Loves is in harmony with the intent, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Uh, five to two. Motion carries.
Can I make a comment here, Trent?
Yes, sir.
I feel like we're all stuck in between a real rock and a hard place on this, there's, there's two things that people. Bring public comment to us on, um, and that's our new ordinance, and they bring public comment on because. They feel like we're taking their freedoms and their rights away from their lands. And then there's Loves, and I feel like that's the, the opposite. So as a board member, it's really hard for me to. To distinguish between the two as far as, as far as what, which one's right, cause I can't fight. I can't fight Loves and then agree with everybody else that their freedoms can't be touched. We can't, we can infringe on their freedoms with this new ordinance, but tell Loves that they can't do what they wanna do, and so. I guess that's more for the public, um, in hopes that you guys understand kinda where we are and, and at least where I am. And where we sit as a board, it's really stuck, I feel. If I was to vote one way on one and one way on the other, I personally would feel a little hypocritical. On this situation, so.
Is that it for that?
Yes.
Okay, number five, I think we should just table this. Uh, till we get some direction.
Oh, sorry, Mac. Are you driving? Go ahead, I know where I was going.
Let me jump up to the top.
I mean, I.
Get to five, who knows?
I know that.
This one I would definitely table, let's see what we can do.
Cause our, our timeline is probably gonna change. Uh, I know we could sit here and go through these definitions for a while, but I. I, I would like to just table it if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
No.
I move that we table it.
Okay.
Until, until.
I, I, I'm not putting a date on that one.
Okay, I get a motion.
Wait, until we reach.
Motion and a second.
As long as it's on the agenda when you wanna do it, it's okay.
To delay.
Can I just comment on this, the land use ordinance, the, um, going forward? I hope that we as a board can recognize that these land use decisions are very nuanced. It is not black and white. And when we review these ordinances for the county, entire county, we have to keep in mind every single. Region and find a middle ground that's gonna work for everybody. Um, that's, I just see that there's a lot of black and white thinking, and I think we're never gonna get this passed. If we cannot suss out the nuance to it and, and where we need to tighten up, where we need to let go. And balance it so that we can actually get something passed. If we're just gonna keep going black and white, black and white, we're gonna always have somebody pushing back. So I, that's why I'm just asking.
Yeah, you're gonna get pushed back no matter which way you go with it.
Right, but if we, if we can come up with a reasonable position to come in at, you know? And explain to the public why this is necessary, or this really isn't necessary, or we don't need to worry about that right now, you know? That there is, it doesn't have to be just because of this, we have to do this, we, we. We can bring a little more, um, I think depth to it in explaining to people, cause. The just pure logical approach is, I think we're gonna find that it just doesn't m- make sense to people. Um, cause.
Well, this is a time that we can pack up. And figure out what direction we wanna go from here on in. So, we take a few deep breaths.
Yeah. And we never have to look at two thousand eleven again, it's the goal.
Let's just make a couple amendments to two thousand eleven and leave it alone.
Couple, three.
I second that.
You know, you know, I don't know if anybody's seen their tax bills lately, but I sure know that in unincorporated San Juan County, I'm paying.
Doubled.
I'm paying taxes as if I'm a, not only an unincorporated property, but also like I'm incorporated. Like as if I'm paying, I feel like I'm paying city and county, but I'm not getting the benefits of city services. So, just another, just to add on to, um, why we need to, this is nuanced. There's a lot going on here with this countywide ordinance that we also have to consider tax implications. Because we are not getting, we are getting taxed a lot for very little in return.
One, one piece of property of mine went up a hundred and one thousand dollars in one year.
Oh, that's nothing. We got four hundred thousand.
Mine in Moab City did a three hundred thousand dollar. Um, got a motion?
What's the motion? Oh, to table.
Yeah, yeah, you made it.
And a second, all those in favor say aye. Cory, thanks for the. Building permit list. Oh. Oh, okay.
One question for you, Cory, did you get all the letters in that you needed? Don't know.
Okay, I'll take one more motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
See you, TC.
Bye, TC.
Bye, TC.
Thank you guys, see you.
All right. Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Are we gonna get a follow up?
Which one did you want, the, I heard? Jen's answered the question.
Right, as far as whether or not it's permitted or conditional, it was like the next.
Sure, next time, yeah.